Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas?
Here.
Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Gage?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrow?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would ask those with cell phones if they would please put them on vibrate or silence them by turning them off. We'd appreciate it. I'd also like to welcome to the commission meeting a young lady by the name of Ally is Lake Spear State graduating this month, at the end of the month, majoring in Fish and Wildlife, and she wants to be a conservation officer. So, great. Nice to see you, Ally. You certainly wish her well. If Bonnie Raphael wants to meet me at the podium, we're going to do a proclamation declaring the month of April 2017 as Distracting Driving Awareness Month. Okay, and Bonnie's with us tonight, and certainly Bonnie works for the city. And Bonnie is primarily responsible, her and her husband Ron, for Kelsey's Law, which, four-year anniversary.
This past March.
This past March, so certainly congratulations for that, and you remain busy. City of Sioux-Saint Marie Distracting Driver Awareness Month, whereas distracted driving claims the lives of thousands of people each year and causes hundreds of thousands of injuries. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that 94 percent of the car crashes are the result of driver error. And whereas 2015 Michigan Statistics reports there were 297,023 crashes and 963 fatal crashes, a 10 percent increase from 2014. And whereas 2015 statistics show distracted driving crashes nationwide have increased 10 percent over 2014, which is the largest percentage increase in 50 years. And whereas 2015 Michigan Statistics report that 16-year-old crashes in Michigan increased by 138 percent, and 15-year-olds in younger crashes increased by 67 percent. And for drivers under 20, increased for everyone of that age. Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control in the United States, eight people are killed and 1,161 injured every day in crashes that are reported to involve distracted driving. And whereas the improved health and well-being of Michigan citizens are a direct result of increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving. And whereas the KDR Challenge, City Commission, City Administration, and Michigan Teen Safety Driving Coalition are committed to reducing the number of traffic deaths and injuries in the city of Sioux-Saint Marie by educating motorists and bringing awareness to dangerous driving behavior. And whereas the campaign against distracted driving has also been immensely aided by law efforts, I'm sorry, law enforcement efforts in Michigan. And whereas a month dedicated to programs and activities about distracted driving will greatly increase awareness. Now therefore, I, Anthony G. Bospas, Mayor of the city of Sioux-Saint Marie, do hereby recognize April 2017 as hashtag #Drive911. Nine and eleven in the city of Sioux-- oh, I'm sorry. Nine and eleven. Nine and three. It's right here. Nine and three. In the city of Sioux-Saint Marie. That's where your hands go on the steering wheel. Here in Sioux-Saint Marie, Michigan Observance of Distracted Driving Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Sioux-Saint Marie to be affixed this third day of April 2017. Anthony G. Bospas, Mayor. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Am I on a three-minute timer?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I really appreciate it. Just last Thursday had the House and the Senate do a resolution on April being Distracted Driving Month. And as you heard from the statistics, they're going up. And this doesn't mean just cellphone use. Distracted driving is eating a sandwich, combing your hair, shaving your face, reading the newspaper. I've seen pictures of this one guy that had his leg out the window and a cellphone in his one hand in driving the vehicle. Not in this town, but I mean, just really, really, you know, things that you shouldn't be doing when you're behind the wheel of a car. So distracted driving means everything, not just the cellphone use. And it means everybody, not just the teens. Even though the teens are at greater risk, that still doesn't make anybody exempt from the fact that they could cause an accident and kill themselves or kill somebody else. Once again, this year, I'm doing-- remember, last year we had these little cards I made up with myths on it and the statistics for this year. This is last year's card because I went beyond the city of distributing these cards. And we have the state police, 35 of their community service troopers. I'm sending 500 cards to them to distribute throughout the state. And Chief Riley helped me. Just in last week, we started out on the list or asking if any of the cities wanted to buy into getting these cards as well to distribute to all the cities, possibly in the state of Michigan. And as of an hour ago, we had 79 cities that are going to take them, and which was a total of, right now, of 9,100. So I've had to up the number from 20,000 to 30,000 cards will be published and distributed throughout the state of Michigan this year. So I'm very, very excited about that. Is my three minutes up? But I just want to concentrate on Chippewa County for just one second, okay? Because the Office of Highway Safety Planning-- because you know, Chippewa County is very dear to my heart-- they had their statistics out. And sadly, in 2015, there was 867 crashes in just Chippewa County alone. Six of those were fatal, and 36 people were injured. Now you might think, well, six, that's not bad, but that's six too many to me. And in their report that they do, they show a map of upper and lower peninsula and where we stand as far as fatal crashes in that, throughout Michigan. And Chippewa County is actually in the red because from 2014 to 2015, we went from three killed to six. So we doubled. So that puts us in the red, which is very sad to me. So I'm begging everybody in Chippewa County, please, just don't drive distracted. You know, a lot of people are working really, really hard to save your life and possibly, you know, a loved one of yours. And I mean, I understand that, you know, my child was in a distracted driving crash, but it's become more than that to me now. So I just ask you all to just drive responsibly. Nine and three. And eyes on the road. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Thank you. Okay, item number two is the public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda, please.
Under the consent agenda, A, minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of March 20th, 2017. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of March 20th, 2017. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, Downtown Development Authority of January 11th, February 8th, and February 22nd. B, Economic Development Corporation of February 14th. C, Sioux-Saint Marie Housing Commission of February 16th. D, Tifa III of October 11th. And E, Zoning Board of Appeals of March 16th. Recommended action is to accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations. One, resignation from the Downtown Development Authority. Recommended action is to accept the resignations of Carl Stutzner and Johan Engle from the Downtown Development Authority and send a letter of thanks for their service to this board. Item two is appointment to the Downtown Development Authority, and the recommended action is to appoint Abby Baker to the DDA to fill the balance of a term to expire on April 1, 2020, and appoint Allison Youngs to the DDA for a term to expire on April 1, 2021. Item C, communications. One, from the Tifa III. Approval of the amended Tifa III bylaws. Recommended action is to approve the amended Tifa III bylaws as presented. Item two under communications is from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Transfer of ownership of a 2016 Class C license for Sioux Hotel located at 3295 I-75 Business Spur here in the Sioux. The recommended action is there's no action required by the commission. It's an informational item only. Item three under communications is also from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. It's a new SDM license for Ironwood Oil Company, which is known as Holiday. And there are two locations, 942 West Portage Avenue and 3287 I-75 Business Spur here in the Sioux. This is also informational item only and no action required by the commission.
Okay, thank you. Is there a Commissioner that'd like an item further explained on the consent agenda? If not, Commissioner Gage.
So moves support of the consent agenda?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item four, communications. A, from Mayor Bospas. Formation of City Manager's Evaluation Committee.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Bospas. As Commissioners are aware, my third full year of employment with the city of Sioux-Saint Marie will be completed on June 11th, 2017. As Commissioners are also aware, last year, goals and objectives for me were established as follows. First, that the manager would continue meeting with the public biannually at the Bayless Public Library or an alternate venue. Secondly, that the manager will present a recommended budget for each fiscal year in which the minimum unrestricted fund balance is at the upper end of the 15 to 20 percent range established by the city's fund balance policy adopted by the city commission on December 2nd, 2013. Thirdly, that the manager will make progress in completing each of the goals established by the commission through its annual goal-setting process. And fourthly, that the manager will obtain an overall evaluation score for each year of employment that is at or above four on the evaluation instrument used by the commission. As the time has come for an annual performance evaluation to be completed, it would be appropriate for a committee of Commissioners to be established for the following purposes. First, to review progress made by me on established goals and objectives during the third year of my employment. Secondly, to establish goals and objectives for completion during the fourth year of my employment. Third, to review and discuss changes that could be made to the employment agreement between myself and the city of Sioux-Saint Marie. Fourth, to summarize scores and comments received from any Commissioner completing the evaluation instrument crafted to measure my performance, which will be distributed. Fifth, to communicate matters regarding my performance. And sixth, to convey this information to the city commission prior to June 30th in anticipation of mutually agreed-upon goals and objectives being adopted by the commission prior to the state for the next year of my employment. Accordingly, it's my request and recommendation that the city commission establish a committee to perform my annual performance evaluation. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. At this point, if the commission would allow me to name the commission and you would agree, it would be Commissioner Bauer, Commissioner Gage, and myself as the evaluation committee to bring back those goals and objectives to the commission. Commissioner Bauer? Would you-- in motion, right? Motion.
So move the mayor's recommendation of himself, myself, and Commissioner Gage on that evaluation.
Support.
So moved, supported. Are there any comments or questions? Certainly like to thank Commissioner Twardy for being there last year, and I thank Commissioner Bauer again and Commissioner Gage for accepting that also. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager.
Under communications, item B is from the Sioux-Saint Marie Convention and Visitors Bureau, Senate Bill Number 271, which would change the school start date.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On this, CBB Director Linda Hoth is here to present to the commission and community.
Good evening, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you for letting me be here tonight. Well, last week I got called to Lansing to testify against the education committee for them. We oppose, you know, the changes in the law. We worked it on-- actually, I was one of the ones that worked on it in 2006, also when we got it passed. So it's been a very good-- but I wanted to update the community and what was going on. As we know, tourism is a vital component of the Michigan economy and our way of life up here. Labor Day weekend is crucial to our tourism industry. Some communities in Michigan, like Sioux-Saint Marie, saw higher hotel occupancy on Labor Day weekend than we did the Fourth of July, and that's actually true numbers from last year. Our August is bigger than our July now. And that's because of post-Labor Day schools is allowing us to have this time. Our schools are back in session. Revenue in the Convention and Visitor Bureau in Sioux-Saint Marie dropped 24 percent after Labor Day. Charlevois saw a hotel drop of 19 percent, and Traverse City saw 12 percent during the same period. Despite success of Pure Michigan, our tourism industry is still largely dependent on in-state travel. This Labor Day, Michigan residents counted for 83 percent of hotel occupancy in Gaylord, Charlevois, and Traverse City. So our in-state travel is extremely important to all of us. We're at about-- during that month, we're at about 72 percent. So, and we do have some out-of-state travel at that time. And we get those data because we all-- all these places that I mentioned, we actually upload zip codes from the hotels, and we have it available to us. In the time since post-Labor Day school was enacted, Traverse City has seen over 110 percent increase in tourism during the month of August. Our August-- our July used to be our biggest month. Our August is our biggest month now. So we just-- we depend on August. And I, as you know, I am vice president of the Michigan Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus, who oppose this law. And we do see the changing landscape in education. We understand that it is going to happen. But we want to make sure, and we know the balanced calendars are coming out and the different things they want to change and different things. We're not against education. And neither is the tourism here in the Sioux. We're not against education. Many school districts and ISDs have already gotten around the post-Labor Day start legislation through the existing waiver system. There is a waiver system out there, and they can go in every year, and they can apply for the waivers. And they've got to prove it, why they need the waiver, why they need to start early. We appreciate the effort to find a new approach to Senate Bill 271. Unfortunately, even with mandated four-day weekends in August, you are still constricting families' ability to take extended vacations as well as cutting into the high school labor force many of the tourism industry rely upon. We, and I'm talking about M.A.CBB there and myself as Convention and Visitors Bureau here in the Sioux, would like to be a part of the talk in Lansing about post-Labor Day. We would rather give you June, a couple, you know, time in June than we would July and August, our two biggest months. So I wanted to let you know here that in Sioux-Saint Marie, our legislators, Senator Smith and Representative Chatfield, opposed this bill. They opposed it already. But what we have to do is give them the data so that they can see the business, not just the Convention and Visitors Bureau but in the hotels, but the other businesses that it will affect. So that they have their ammunition to be able to go forward. So if anybody out there has data, we would like it, you know, to get it to your legislators and put it out there. And we actually are starting to work all the way across the UP. The UP is big. I mean, we're just starting to get really good things happening up here, and it will affect us. So I just wanted to let you know what was going on. I would like the support of the city if we can do a resolution to our legislators.
We should be able to draft a resolution that I can sign with the city manager or all seven of us can sign and send it to our legislators?
Okay, I would really, really appreciate that.
With a four, that onto the-- who's the person that-- was it Senate Bill? Who's the senator that brought that?
Um, Kohlberg or--
Nolenberg?
Nolenberg.
Pavlov?
Yeah, I have his information that I can get to you. Yeah, he is. And it's just something that we've, you know, let's leave the law as the law is. Let's not change it. Any questions?
Mr. Lynn.
Who's for this?
Downstate?
Downstate.
Way downstate, I'm guessing.
Yes. And educators.
We fought this battle way back in the mid-'80s when I was on the school board, and I couldn't get a second at a school board meeting at the state to even-- because at that point, we were trying to get it. And they finally got it in 2006. So for the past 11 years with the waiver program, it is a way that people-- that school districts should start early if they have a problem, so.
And when I was in Lansing, they said the waiver program. Because they have to apply for it every year. It was too much paperwork.
God help.
Mr. Bauer.
I have a hard time believing that educators are in favor of this because all the educators I know like a three-month vacation.
It was the superintendents that were there.
Okay. Well, they're obviously not pulling the teachers.
Yes. (laughing).
Maybe that's where we need to start the grassroots, that the teachers, you know, can talk to the superintendents.
Yeah, so we have this, you know, and we're working hard on this. And I want to let you know, at the state level, I mean, I've been down there twice. Two Tuesdays in a row, I was down there. And so, and I will continue to go down as things come up.
Mr. Gage, has a comment or question?
Absolutely. It's frustrating because, I mean, I think we talked about this two years ago, and sadly, we're probably going to talk about it two years from now, and then two years after that, and two years after that. And the problem is, in the era of term limits, this issue seems to come up every single legislative session, and I don't doubt that it will come up in two years. And so it might behoove us to have just a really nice resolution on file that we could just send down every two years. It's like, nope, nope, nope.
That's a good idea.
And we've heard our legislators, you know, I mean, in their campaigning, saying, you know, turn it back to the schools. And so, but we can't have that. As I said, we know what it brings into this community. We know the numbers. And what I heard from people on Portage Avenue when I was talking to them this last week is, it's families. In August, we're seeing families, you know, multi-generation. So, thank you for your-- any other questions?
Mr. Twardy?
Just a quick comment. As somebody who is probably opening a new business down on Portage, I'm not in favor of this. Because you're only looking at four or five months where you're making 12 months' worth of money, and you're going to cut a whole month out of all those businesses.
You can expect if school starts downstate early, then by the 12th or the 15th of August, it's going to-- it drops dramatically. If you'd like to make a motion that we send a resolution.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I'll make a motion that we send a resolution.
Support. Does it move, supportive? Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
The last item under communications, item C, is from Sioux Events. Update on upcoming events and activities.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Joe DuVal with Sioux Events is here to present.
Evening, Mayor Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Last couple months have been exciting. We've been getting into a lot of our activities that are going to be coming up for this year as well as for the 350th. And I'll start off with the 350th anniversary. We're working on the finer details of our New Year's Eve kickoff to the year of celebration. We will be doing a family event during the day on New Year's Eve, and then also having a dinner and party-type atmosphere that evening. We'll have a ball drop as well as some fireworks at midnight. So that'll be our kickoff to the event. Every month, we have different activities that involve the school systems. In the summertime, we'll be revving up the rendezvous in the Sioux to have some more activities there. Festival-type atmosphere as well with different bands, different foods, and different things like that for everybody. I'm also working with Lake Spear State University and some other folks in the community. We're going to be working on getting a historical exhibit for the summer. And we plan on putting it down in one of the vacant buildings on Portage Avenue. And from there, whether we get it in the fall also in a building, we'll still be working on that. I encourage community members to let us know if there's anything that you would like to see throughout the celebration. And you can contact me at any time for that. And I guess I have one more question for you. Is there anybody on the commission or mayor who can tell me what the 350th anniversary name is for the celebration?
We're still alive?
There you go. It's actually a semi-septennial for 350 years. So we will be celebrating a semi-septennial.
Very good. Wow.
Actually, we have also started our fundraising for the event, and as of right now, we've raised over $14,000. As businesses, individuals donate to it, we will be bringing them a window-type cling that they can put in their business windows to show support for the event.
Right. And we also know that the I-500 is 50 years old, and I know that Linda Hoth has been involved as a member, I believe, my representative or the city's representative on that board also. And that'll be a big event also in coinciding with our 350th.
Yep, we're going to be working with them also to do some different events and bring some more activities to the community.
Great. Sounds like you got a great start.
Yeah. Next thing I want to share with you is the connection that we have with the Coast Guard. I've been meeting with several of the members over there. We have had Suzanne come and join our 350th committee as well. And I've been working with the gentleman on Engineers Day and the open house that they do down at the Coast Guard base. Next May, we'll be having a meeting to help bring our connection together. And then the last thing I'll talk tonight on is the citywide cleanup. Today was our deadline for posters, or I'm sorry, a flyer-type thing to put on T-shirts. Children in the Sioux school system, Bowardian and Saint Mary's, were able to design a T-shirt. They were third through fifth graders. We've got several designs that we get to choose from later this week. We are on track with cleanup to be May 20th, and everything is going full head with that. We'll release the flyer and the information shortly this week, probably.
That's Saturday, May 20.
Saturday, May 20, correct. We'll have a picnic up at Sherman Park as well. And going to plan some, maybe some games and different events for the kids to do while they're up there. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Thank you very much, Mayor Joe.
All right. Have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you. Okay, item number five is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the city manager's report, would provide for the appointment to an ordinance review committee. As Commissioners are aware, the city commission took action at its February 20th regular meeting to adopt the goal of creating a committee that includes members meeting to adopt the goal of creating a committee that includes members of the business community and community partners as appropriate to reevaluate every city ordinance that is at least fifty years old. In further reviewing this goal, city administration is respectfully requesting that the City Commission appoint a city commissioner to serve on the proposed committee. This committee could work to review the codified ordinances of the city on a chapter-by-chapter basis in an effort to review existing ordinances, repeal unnecessary ordinances, and ensure that efficiencies are continuing to be maximized in municipal operations. Importantly, it should be noted that in fulfilling this mission, that there may be instances in which the committee will also likely need to review ordinances that have been enacted for less than fifty years. The scope of the proposed committee could include a review of all existing ordinances with a focus on eliminating unnecessary rules and regulations and further enhancing efficiencies if so approved by the City Commission. It is currently anticipated that this committee would begin to meet toward the end of the second quarter of twenty seventeen or during the third quarter of this year. Accordingly, it's my respectful recommendation that the City Commission appoint a city commissioner to serve on the ordinance review committee as presented. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And during our goal-setting, uh, session, it was, uh, Commissioner Gage that brought that to the commission and I've discussed that with Commissioner Gage and he'd be happy to serve that if, if the commission so desired. Commissioner Ostrout?
I was going to actually nominate Commissioner Lynn because he was probably had a lot to part to do with all these, uh, ordinances fifty years or older. So I thought he could like to go back and revisit them.
One more shot.
That's good.
Commissioner Ostrout, would you like to make a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we have, uh, Commissioner Gage in with the, um, the review, the appointment to ordinance review committee.
Okay, is there any other comments? Commissioner Gage, you'd like to make a comment at all or?
Uh, I'm really excited about it. Um, I've done just kind of a preliminary scan of our code of ordinances and there's some strange ones in there, like, uh, one that you can't have curtains in exterior windows for bowling alleys and pool halls. So, uh, technically, Maloney's Alley could get a fifty-dollar fine for their curtains and the windows of their bar, so hopefully Abby Baker doesn't find out about that and get fined fifty dollars, so.
Don't tell anybody.
I thought they took their curtains out.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, they did? Okay, well, then they're good, they're safe now, but we're watching. So, there's a couple of fun ones, I'm excited to get to work. Thank you.
We have a motion in support. Um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under City Manager's Report, would provide for the approval of resolutions making changes to the city's Act Fifty-One map. On this matter, City Engineer Basista will present to the commission.
Okay. Evening, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As, uh, as the, the appointed street administrator for the city, annually, I have to, um, certify our road-certified map and, and that is what we, it's called short Act Fifty-One and it's what the city, the map that the city, uh, the miles of street that the city receives Michigan transportation funds, monies annually from, uh, from the state. And usually, it's a simple thing, have any of our roads changed? No, sign it, send it in. Uh, but there's been some recent occurrence and in, in, um, some historical things that, uh, we have found over the last year, so, uh, that needs to clean up our Act Fifty-One map. So I'm going to, Fani will turn on the, I'll put it up here because it's easier for me. Yeah, that's good. Okay, the first one, this is a, a simple change, actually. Uh, down here is Three Mile Road, it's, this is the I-75 Expressway and it's West Fourteenth Street where it was realigned to as part of the Meyer Development. So this, this just changes the centerline description for, uh, from what it previously was to there, but a, uh, uh, resolution is required for each one of these changes. Uh, the next one is Country Club Drive. It's the, actually, the driveway going to the Country Club, but, uh, since the city owned it, owned the Country Club before, um, and we plowed it, I suppose at one time we decided to put it on our Act Fifty-One map, so, uh, but now the property's been sold and it's no longer a public street, it's a private driveway, so that gets removed from our, from our map. Next one is East Seventeenth Avenue and, uh, and Young Street. So here's the I-75 Business Center and this is Ashman. Um, this is the Fort Nicola Trailer Park. This, this is East, uh, Seventeenth Avenue extended and this is a short, um, part of Young Street that was platted. The city has been maintaining that and plowing it since it was built as part of an expansion of the Fort Nicola Trailer Park. The city engineer, back, uh, way back when, also approved the road and it, and accepted it and City Commission actually accepted it too as, as a city street, uh, but for some reason, it just never got sent in to be included on our Act Fifty-One map. So, um, we're just officially adding that now, so we, uh, it counts towards our mileage. Another, another past oversight, this is, um, this would be Fifth, West Fifth Avenue. Here's, uh, Fourth Avenue, here's Eighteenth Street. There's a small, and this is Fifth Avenue and it extends to here. In, I think in the seventies, um, a couple of property owners gave, actually gave the city easements for this portion, uh, to be a public road in order to build houses back there. The city, again, has been plowing it, has been maintaining it, it's just a little loop off of, um-
Nineteenth Street.
And we, we officially have the easement and, again, it's just a matter of adding it to our Act Fifty-One map to be certified public street. And we're just going to call it West Fifth Avenue. It's technically new because it's not a platted, it's not a platted street, it's just added through easement.
Um, I guess a question, these, these streets that we're accepting into the street, are those, um, do they meet the city specifications for gravel roads? Are these gravel roads or these?
Uh, this one is a gravel road. Uh, Young and East Seventeenth are also gravel. At the time that they were built and accepted and put into public use, yes, they were, they met our, uh, requirements, our standards at that time. Today, to, to accept a street, a gravel street like this, we wouldn't do it today.
Okay.
But we've basically, we technically owned and maintained these streets since they were done for over thirty years, it's just a matter of-
You're just cleaning up the-
Yep, just cleaning up our Act Fifty-One map.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last one is part of the Bridge Village, uh, pilot ordinance, uh, it was a change of ownership. Uh, you, City Commission did, uh, agree as a contingency as part of approving the ordinance that Bridge Village would take old back over those streets. Um, they, they are strictly streets for circulation for the, the hous, that housing and, um, e- even at the time, uh, of the acceptance, the act, the city engineer at the time did not recommend accepting those streets, but they were accepted anyway as public streets and this was an opportunity to give them back to their rightful owners.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you, more, more like a comment, uh, because the East Seventeenth Street one was a constituent question that came to me and, because you know how snow is a very interesting topic up here all the time and the fact that the city is sometimes plowing some streets and sometimes not plowing some other streets. So, so I got to learn about what Act Fifty-One was and this is why I think it's kind of fun to be a commissioner, because the question came to me, why is the city plowing a street in a private area? And then I reached out to Oliver and come to find out, he's like, oh, that's an Act Fifty-One street. Well, what is an Act Fifty-One street? So now we're adding it in, so now we're actually be gonna, gonna be getting money for this even though we've been taking care of it for over thirty years, correct? So I, I just find it really interesting, so, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Commissioner Gage?
My only, uh, question is, um, are we required to, to update this and review this annually or is that kind of, um, just something, it seems like a good practice.
We're only required to certify that there are cha, no changes, um, but if there are changes, this is the time to put them in and, and adding streets or removing streets requires a elected body, uh, resolution to do so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Lou, would you like to make a motion?
So move the city engineers' recommendation.
Support.
It's been moved, supported, are there any questions?
Just, I got a question for you people. Victor Knox, outside of Mrs. Lalone who's in the audience, and you may know him too, who was Victor Knox?
Mayor Sault Ste. Marie. Or no, Congressman.
He was U.S. Congressman in the forties and fifties from Sault Ste. Marie.
Replaced by Raymond Clevenger.
I, I ran his campaigns. I'll say.
I'm shocked.
Anyone else? Thanks, Marta. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy? Yes. Mayor Bospis?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
That concludes the City Manager's Report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number six is Status Reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under Status Reports, is just a reminder that on Monday, April seventeenth, I will be formally submitting the annual budget to the City Commission for the commission's review. We anticipate distributing the budget documents to the city commissioners by Thursday, April thirteenth. As commissioners are aware, there's a scheduled work session on Tuesday, April eighteenth and four fifteen P.M., as well as additional time slots reserved for April nineteenth and twentieth at four fifteen P.M. if necessary. On Monday, April twenty-fourth, the commission will hold a special meeting at four fifteen P.M. to reconcile the proposed budget prior to its presentation and potential adoption in May. Again, we'd like to thank Bill Muntzle for his participation as well as the commission for their engagement.
Any questions on that schedule? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B, under Status Reports, pertains to the twenty-seventeen municipal election schedule and this Deputy City Manager Troyer will present.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, twenty-seventeen is the year for the municipal elections. Um, the, this November, the four-year terms of Commissioner Bauer, Commissioner Lynn, and Commissioner Twardy will expire in addition to a Mayor Bospis two-year term. The filing dates that, uh, anybody interested in running for, um, is April twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday at four P.M. That is the deadline to file the declaration of intent and affidavits for, um, any potential candidates. Um, they cannot be filed fi, earlier than April eighteenth and then again, no later than four P.M. on April twenty-fifth. Um, once they've filed as an interest, uh, the nominating petitions are due then by four P.M. on May sixteenth and the petitions require fifty signatures. Um, and then depending on the number of candidates that, uh, file, the primary election will be held August eighth and that will be if there's two candidates running for mayor or six candidates running for city commission. Um, if we don't have enough interest for a primary, then the general election will be November seventh. Anybody interested in, um, running can stop by the city clerk's office and pick up a packet of information and the, uh, the, uh, forms and applications that are needed to file.
Okay, thank you. And I think the, the commission, uh, Commissioners, Bauer, Commissioner Twardy have said that they intend to run again for another four-year term and I intend to run again for another two-year term, so, I'll make that part also. You want to have any questions? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Item C, under Status Reports, just a reminder regarding the change in polling locations in advance of the May second election. If you previously voted at Washington School, just a reminder that you'll now be voting at the EDC Smart Zone Building located at twenty-three forty-five Meridian Street and if you previously voted at Lincoln School, you will now be voting at St. Joseph Church located at eleven hundred one Minneapolis Street. Uh, also a reminder that if you vote at the Presbyterian Church, you will still be voting there. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on the polling locations? And we know we make, make sure that, uh, the public is aware of that too, right? Okay?
And finally, item D, under Status Reports, as an updating about fishing opportunities at the George Kemp Downtown Marina. As a reminder and an update with the recent closure of the Alfred Park Boardwalk along the St. Mary's River, the city is providing an update that anglers, young and old, can still fish at the George Kemp Downtown Marina along the boardwalk on the riverfront. Although fishing is not allowed in the Marina Basin, there are plenty of opportunities for anglers along the riverside of the boardwalk. Visitors and the public are welcome to try their luck and we appreciate everyone adhering to M D N R standards at the George Kemp Downtown Marina. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, thank you, I just have a, a question about that really quick. I was out for a run on Sunday and I saw quite a bit of activity down at Alfred Park and I'm just kind of concerned how, I mean, I even saw some vehicles down there, like parked right along the edge and so, is it boarded off? I mean, it was, but is it still? How are people getting down there?
Uh, thank you for that question, Commissioner. Uh, it's my understanding that the fence that was put into place sequesters off the, uh, portion of the property onto which, uh, citizens and our guests should not be going on to.
Okay, so where they are going is still safe?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
As long as it's not beyond the fence, that's established.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions? That concludes the status report.
It does, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, item number seven, or matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Cliff or Josh? Okay, let's go with Cliff and then.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, our board is currently in the process of electing new officials, uh, for our student government body. Uh, we will be, um, voting actually to start this week and we will be having the results in the next couple of weeks. Um, it's my pleasure, uh, to announce from the board that we will be having our inauguration, our swearing-in inauguration of new representatives on April twentieth and we would like to invite , uh, any member of the board, uh, from the state commission to come attend the event, um, as you'll be able to see the new representatives and also ultimately the new student liaison to the city for the upcoming next year since I will be graduating. I just thought I would, uh, formally invite all of you to that event.
Where, where is that located?
Uh, that should be in the anchor room. Uh, sometimes it changes depending on scheduling, it's in the Sizzler room, in the Sizzler Center. Usually, it's in our, means are always at nine P.M.
Nine, nine P.M. a night?
Yep.
On April the twentieth?
April twentieth. I'll keep you in the loop.
Okay. Anyone? Thank you very much for the invite. We're glad to be there. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too, thanks. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a quick community announcement about the construction summit tomorrow morning at seven-thirty A.M. at the Sizzler Center at L S S U. Also, uh, is networking at seven-thirty. Registration at seven-thirty. Breakfast and networking from eight to nine and then, uh, presentations from nine to eleven. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? We do have, I just want to introduce, uh, I'm sure she's no stranger to the community, she's been here maybe eight months, uh, or nine, maybe ten months now, Susan Peralda, United Way Director, Executive Director in the audience and certainly doing an exceptional job of United Way and nice to see you here, Susan. Uh, sometime when you want to make a presentation, uh, to the public and you could use the, the microphone and the commission, uh, to do that, to bring us up to date on the campaign and stuff, we'd be more than welcome to that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item number eight, matters presented by the City Commission. Commissioner Twardy?
Well, I guess if you're not going to say anything, I just, I thought it was really great that, uh, we had an opportunity to welcome the first ship of the season and I'll only, I only, I can't remember all the details, but I know that Commissioner Gary, um, uh, you and then Oliver Turner, we were all there representing the city. It was fantastic. I have, I don't think I've ever been in the Pilot House of a thousand footer, so, uh, that opportunity was, was great and the captain was very welcoming of us. It was his first opportunity, so at that, you can-
Sure, it was, uh, the Stuart J. Court, um, first ship, uh, two thousand seventeen and we now have a collage of, uh, donated by a gentleman, Vince Courier, I believe, from, uh, Charlemagne and he's donating that to the ci, to, he gave it to me, but I'm, we're going to give it to the, to the Commissioner of Visitors Bureau to hopefully give to the, um, what's the name of that entity? Sioux Locks Visitor Center. Uh, to hang, to hang in there, um, Sioux Locks Visitor Center, um, and that'll be the, hopefully every year, we can change, uh, the, making it a little more, um, uh, a little more of an activity and hopefully a little more support, a little more excitement as, as the first shipment, certainly the captain, Greg, uh, what was it? Sipper, S-I-P-P-E-R. Uh, it was a fir, he's been on the lakes for over thirty years-
Yeah.
-and it was the first time as the captain, um, and he was just excited, he, uh, invited us up, uh, gave us some, some food to eat and, uh, we spent maybe an hour or so in the Pilot House and, uh, just an exciting time and, uh, there were about twenty individuals there and, uh, we were just happy to do that and it was, it was a great time. One of the nicer days, um, we've ever had, uh, you could have a spring coat, um, on visiting and they had the ladder which was close to the, to the lock entrance, so, uh, the walk wasn't that bad either as far as being cold and rainy and that kind of stuff because I remember, um, meeting the boat that you had, uh, a hood, boots, gloves and you still froze, uh, walking out that way, so this was, this was great, so, um, anyone else?
Well, just, I would, just wanted to elaborate a few more things.
Sure.
I, I think a lot of people, unless you grew up around here, you don't really realize what the first ship is and how exciting it really is and my dad, being a river rat, worked for the Corps of Engineers for over forty years. Uh, you know, as a child, I got tired of hearing it and then now as I'm an adult, I think it's fascinating. And so I know Sen, Senator Wayne Schmidt was trying to get up here, but they had closed the bridge that day due to falling ice and, um, he was also with, uh, James Hoag who worked for our congressman and, um, he, when I started sending him all the pictures and we were communicating back and forth, he said, I didn't know this was this big of a deal. I'm like, no, because you're Trump, from Traverse City, you know? You're not from Sault Ste. Marie, I mean, it's a huge deal up here, so, he said that he would make sure that he is here the night before, um, next spring, so, um, it, it is, is, it's a very exciting time for the city and for the Sioux Locks.
And it's something that we maybe can build on, and I know the Coast Guard wants to do that. There's a lady that we met as an officer, Coast Guard, they're here for such a short time, a two, three-year period normally, but if we can establish that. Linda, you have something?
Yeah.
Come on up.
This is the first year that we've ever done any advertising for it.
Okay.
And we did an advertising, and we gave away an overnight stay, we did all kinds of things, and they said it was, it was really packed down there compared to what we're normally seeing at that time. So this is a, we're, and this is one of our events that we want to make bigger every year, because, I mean, it is, it's exciting.
It's a great, great time, and a lot of us take it for granted, but we do have these ships that ply, the lock area and the Great Lakes, and it's tremendous when you, when you see them and other people coming, 500,000 plus, coming to the lock area.
It's the first one I missed in 15 years, you guys. But I was down in Grand Rapids with the Firehawks.
It was noted that you weren't there.
Yeah. I had, but it was not a hard choice. Hockey first.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Lynn?
Your Honor, I so move that we adjourn this meeting.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.